All right, first on our agenda tonight, communications from the public and press. I don't see anyone from the press here tonight. I don't know if there's anyone here from the public that would like to address the board. Doesn't look to be the case. So in that case, we'll move on. We'll move on, skip over board correspondence. We don't have any at this point. And we'll move on to information and reports and start with our student ex officio report and Ms. Beard.
Things at the high school have been running smoothly this past month and the hall monitors that were recently hired this year are being are being well-liked by both the students and teachers throughout the school. And the after-school buses that we got on Mondays and Wednesdays at 4:15 are being used by some students. There's just a few students right now, but obviously it will take some time to build.
Mr. Lincoln, we're having some trouble hearing in the monitors down below. Is that something you can address for us? Isabel, would you mind giving a little bit of that again, please? I'm sorry, I had trouble hearing you and I think down at the other side of the room, there may have been some trouble.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
So everything at the high school is running smoothly smoothly this past month. The hall monitors that were hired, not hall monitors, the study hall monitors that were hired this year are being very well-liked by both the students and the teachers in the high school. And students are using the after-school buses Mondays and Wednesdays at 4:15. It's obviously a small group of students right now, but with time it will build.
Excellent, thanks for doing that again. And thanks, Mr. Lincoln. Moving on to the facilities committee report and Mr. LeBlanc.
We met January 6th at the high school. All the board were present, Dan was missing. Guest was Nicole, Alan, and king in king team, Megan, Phil, and Dan. We talked about the capital project. A lot of items are listed and we're trying to cut down because it's going over budget. And it was a good thing that Mr. Oliver was there so we could focus on the high school, which has the more cut to do. So he was very instrumental. We still have a lot of money on our plan, but we're cutting it down. We'll talk about it again at the next meeting. Again, we focused on the high school, but we did review all the other schools as well and buildings. We had a small tour. We focused on the problematic girls locker room and the swimming pool. We discussed what we could do for the capital project. Meeting concluded shortly after seven. And we're gonna have our next meeting Tuesday, January 21st at the junior high. And we're gonna still work on those lists to bring that down so we can proceed with the capital project later on this this year.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Are there any questions for either Robert or for Isabel with the student ex officio report? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the policy committee report from Mr. Monroe.
Okay, policy committee met December 10th last month and we reviewed, looks like every policy was in the 4,000 series. First policy, 4110 administrative personnel. We did have some discussion regarding the need for this policy. Everything in the policy would also be covered in an MBA contract. So we recommend rescinding the policy. We did not speak about it in the January meeting though, but I don't know, Mr. Burke, do you have any further information about the requirement of that policy from our discussion in December? Not necessary, okay. Perfect. 4121 administrative intern was a review only. 4210 administrative organization operation. We recommend removing item B from the policy. We stated it was unclear in the policy's paragraph about authority and power. And the committee recommends referring to the organizational chart for more clarity. 4211 lines of responsibility. There was language included to the policy to add to the assistant and superintendent for instruction. 4212 organizational chart. The school attorney was listed in that organizational chart. It was moved to be attached to the Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools. Everything else remained the same. 4220 administrative authority. Added the words to be, added to begin the language upon notification to the Board of Education. And that was, let me take a look real quick. Yep, that's correct. There was a subsequent change of power. 4230 district committees, that was a review-only policy. No changes, as well as 4240. Evaluation the superintendent and other administrative staff. 4250 use of committees. It's a duplicate policy to 4230, so we recommend rescinding that policy. As well as 4260. Evaluation the superintendent and other administrative staff. That's a duplicate of 4240. And then the other items that were discussed were the, we discussed it in last month's meeting as well. And Mr. Haggert had presented the draft for the board norms for our Board of Education. And so we discussed, I know we had some discussion in last month's meeting, but we also talked about it again in this prior meeting in January. And it's in the notes here so that way we can kind of just review what was discussed. And so the big things within those board norms were the heading categories. Where previously they were the Board of Education agrees to. We thought it really, we thought it had the blanket coverage when we changed the language under each setting. So if you're in the document right now, if you look at general governance norms, where it says the Board of Education should actually be aspires to. Because that holds us to less of what we talked of, almost like a contractual language. Where we're not actually withheld to that, but something that we aspire to do as part of that norm of our roles as board members. So that's kind of where we went. But as far as the bullet points under each, under each item, we thought felt we were okay with, as long as it had that blanket coverage. And that was it for the December policy. Any questions?
Yes. Last month, I remember Trish had a comment regarding under the, I believe it's under the meeting norms, no, not the meeting norms. Communications norms. Where, and again, this is a proposal. The bullet says that the president would be the spokesperson on behalf of the board and the superintendent would speak on behalf of the district. And you were in favor of a bit of a softening of that language. And if you could reiterate what that was, I'd like to make, I'd like to ameliorate your concern about that.
My computer died, so I don't have that. And I probably could purloin the notes, but I think it was along the lines that it basically said that you would speak for the board.
No, not me, but the president.
Okay, the president would speak for the board and what I was saying was any of the things that we voted on and agreed to as a board that you could be the spokesperson for, but not that you were, not that the president would be a spokesperson in general. So if we had voted to do something that absolutely you could speak to the public or the press about that. But the way that the language was, I wasn't sure whether it was clear.
Okay. Would everyone be in agreement that that's something that we could sort of clean up outside of another review by the policy committee? You agree with that, Zach?
We can take a second look at it. I do.
I was suggesting that we, that we just, you know, make the change here and now, basically, without having another review by the policy. You've got other things to do.
Recommendations on change to the communication.
I think we can massage that.
For previously tabled items, tabled items, basically, there are meeting items. What's the right way to phrase it?
Just that it would be anything that the board had agreed upon.
Were voted upon items?
Were voted upon.
Okay. So we'll get some of that language taken care of and bring it back next month for a full, you know, to do an approval by the full board. Does that sound, sound good?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Monroe on the policy committee report? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to my report, which is actually a presentation. Are we all set to go? And I'm not, I'm not seeing where the link is.
Further down in the email.
Is it on email? Right on the agenda.
There was one on the email too, the Board of Ed email. If you scroll down, it's like the fourth thing that Ashley had put forth, there's a link.
No, I don't see that. Not on ours. Would everyone be in agreement that that's something that we could sort of clean up outside of another review by the policy committee? You agree with that, Zach?
We can take a second look at it. I do.
I was suggesting that we, that we just, you know, make the change here and now, basically, without having another review by the policy. You've got other things to do.
Recommendations on change to the communication.
I think we can massage that.
For previously tabled items, tabled items, basically, there are meeting items. What's the right way to phrase it?
Just that it would be anything that the board had agreed upon.
Were voted upon items?
Were voted upon.
Okay. So we'll get some of that language taken care of and bring it back next month for a full, you know, to do an approval by the full board. Does that sound, sound good?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Monroe on the policy committee report? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to my report, which is actually a presentation. Are we all set to go? And I'm not, I'm not seeing where the link is.
Further down in the email.
Is it on email? Right on the agenda.
There was one on the email too, the Board of Ed email. If you scroll down, it's like the fourth thing that Ashley had put forth, there's a link.
No, I don't see that.
Not on ours.
Ah, there we go.
Trish, your computer's?
Died.
Mine, I've seen this already.
Drew, can you hear us?
Yes, how are we guys doing?
Everybody's just getting logged in.
Yeah, take your time.
This call may be recorded for note-taking and coaching purposes. This call may be recorded for note-taking and coaching purposes. This call may be recorded for note-taking and coaching purposes.
Do you have it on?
You need it on the monitor.
This call may be recorded for note-taking and coaching purposes.
You gotta love teams, I'll do that anytime someone joins, I do apologize.
Drew, where else?
Alrighty. Just so there's an echo, let's all stay on mute unless there's a question. It might be beneficial as well to use our chat box as I go throughout the presentation tonight. But appreciate everyone letting me join our call and happy to walk through diligent community today. Before I begin, if everyone or someone can give me a thumbs up to let me know if we can see the Shaler area school district.
This call may be recorded for note-taking and coaching purposes.
All right, beautiful. Alrighty. Well, before I begin, what I'm gonna be doing this evening is walking through diligent community very quickly on the public-facing view of the system, as well as the backend or private view from the board member aspect, or the board member point of view here. A little bit about the organization, we're currently partnered with NISVA and have been for about 12 years. As of the first of this year, we have 485 districts currently using board docs, which might be a familiar term for you all. And we have just now released our new product diligent community, which is gonna be the future of our organization. And we're currently working on migrating our board docs customers to the new platform diligent community, which is what we'll be walking through here today. So great customer base in the state and we definitely enjoy being partners with NISVA and also beneficial to have that preferred pricing through our partnership with NISVA. So that's just kind of what we are and who our partner is. And what diligent community is, is an agenda and minutes management solution. I really like to say this is a one-stop shop for anything board or district-related. It's very beneficial for transparency, not only publicly, but for our internal users. Very nice for security. And then we're gonna see a lot of the efficiencies come into place as far as the creation and release and management of our material. Now, as mentioned, we're gonna be looking at the public-facing view of diligent community to begin. And how most of our districts set up their account is a simply hyperlink this URL off the district website. For the majority of our customers, if you were to hit the Board of Education tab or the agendas and minutes tab from the district site, it's gonna automatically pull up what we see here, which is the public-facing side of diligent community. Now I'm gonna navigate throughout the site very briefly. And I'll start by showing our calendar feature up here in the top right. This will inform us of any of our meetings for that particular month. You can see that I did have a meeting this week on the 14th. And I can very easily navigate to that agenda and potentially those minutes if they've been released on that particular meeting date. The very quick access for our public to quickly get to our agendas. I also wanted to point out that you can see on our February 11th meeting date, I see that there's a meeting listed for the 11th. However, I do not have access to click into that meeting. That means our publishing team has not released the agenda quite yet. However, they've informed the public of an upcoming Board of Education meeting from February, or in February, I should say. Then looking down our right-hand side, you do have the option to connect any type of social media platforms. I would say that YouTube and Facebook is probably the most common if we're doing any type of video recording or live streaming. And then quick access, this will show us today's upcoming and recently-held meetings. Again, very quick access for our public to see any of our most relevant content. With that said, let's navigate to the middle of my screen here. And before I walk through each of these features, I did want to mention that this is what comes with the full diligent community site. However, if you hear me mention a feature that we do not want to use, not a problem, we can just have that deactivated on the account. I'll start with live streaming. We are directly integrated with YouTube Live Stream. So if we are doing YouTube Live Stream for our meetings, there's a direct integration with the agenda. Meaning that if I had a YouTube Live Stream link on our agenda of January 14th, and I come to my site and I see the live stream active, I can click into that, which will split-screen the agenda with the live screen. So your public can follow along via the agenda, as well as watch our live stream. If we are not live-streaming, but we do a Zoom integration or any type of virtual meeting, you do have the access to directly connect that to a particular meeting. There's a couple of different options we have there. Moving on, you also will have a policy management system within the solution. This is very beneficial as it's direct integration with the agenda. Now, of course, on the public-facing side, we're only gonna be seeing our most active and up-to-date policies. These are our adopted and approved policies. I wanted to point out the keyword searchability, which makes it very easy for us to find particular policies by keyword search. And of course, let's envision our policies within the solution here, right? So these most likely won't be labeled as yours would be. However, let's envision our sections, as I click into section 100 GS. And let's envision our codes here. Here's GS1, just to give you a reference of how our policies will look within the solution. And very clearly, I can see here, this is published and it has been approved and adopted by our board. This is our most active policy for GS1. Now, the benefit on the backend of the policy management is this policy may be going through a review, a revision. We're always seeing what's made public, right? Even if we're making changes on the backend, that's not reflecting publicly until it's been approved and released. That is the policy archive. We'll have our full policy book with keyword searchability. We'll navigate back to the home screen here. Moving throughout our features, this is the document library. I really like to say this is repository for documentation that may not necessarily be on an agenda. Some examples would be public newsletters, student or employee handbooks, active contracts, any type of committee or department reporting, anything from field trip calendars for the year. You have a lot of creativity with what we store in the system, ultimately just enhancing our transparency and management in one solution. We're not managing content outside of just diligent community. Again, that one-stop-shop hub, right? Anything board or district-related will be in the system here. Next is attendance, and this will track attendance by individual board member, as well as anytime they voted on a resolution. Nice piece for archiving data. Next, we'll have the subscription feature, and this is really nice for public engagement. The purpose of this tool is to eliminate calls in for requests for information. I like to say the headache eliminator. This will allow your public to subscribe to a particular meeting group. So in this case, my Board of Education, if I was a public member, a parent, what have you, and I'm subscribed to Board of Education, I will be notified anytime a new public version of a Board of Education agenda has been released. It's a very nice email notification with a hyperlink to diligent community for us to reference that new month's agenda. Lastly, is the citizen engagement feature, which will allow your public to request to speak at upcoming meetings. Sending your team, your publishing team, a request to either approve or reject that request depending on the request. So with that said, you know, this is what comes with the full package of diligent community. However, if I had mentioned one that we don't necessarily want to use, not a problem, we can just have that not shown on your site. Now, from our featured page, I'm gonna go into our meetings tab. And this is where we'll find our full archive of all of our agendas and minutes by meeting group and by meeting date. So if we were just planning to use this for our Board of Education, we would only have one meeting group in here. I did want to mention, you do have the option to purchase the committee manager feature, which will allow us to manage multiple work groups and have multiple permissions by meeting group. Now, in this case, I'm just gonna reference our Board of Education, our most recent meeting of February 14th. This is gonna pull up the web version of our agenda. Now, a reminder, if this is not how we label or categorize or itemize the agenda, it's totally customizable. Your publishing team will really just mimic your current layout of the agenda, but create it in the community format. So here's the web version, which is really what I like to say the simple version. Very easy for us to quickly glance at or look over. And then we will also have what's called the packet version, which is our downloadable and printable PDF. Something I wanted to point out is any of our supporting attachments will have page number references for our packet. In this case, item 2.1 is a December minutes approval. I can reference pages 5 through 9 for our minutes. Or I have the access to just simply hit my hyperlink, which will pull up our pending approval draft minutes from December. Anything that is unapproved in community will reflect draft. Will inform our public that these are yet approved or yet released for the fully-approved feature. But we do give transparency on our meetings while we make our approval. Again, we'll have that web and the packet version. Also wanted to mention that you do have the quick access to bounce from meeting to meeting. If I were to go back to our December minute, excuse me, meeting, not only will I find our agenda on December 17th, I will also find our minutes on December 17th. So everything's in one location, very easy for us to find, and always related to its particular meeting date. Again, making management and ease of use of finding content much easier. With the archive of our agendas and minutes, I did want to mention that if we did purchase community, your team has the option to archive any of your previous data. I would say most of our new customers archive about three to five years back of their current material. And the reason being is it becomes keyword searchable once it's in the product. If we're currently posting PDF documents of our agendas on our district website, you do have to be clicked into that document to search it. It could be a little bit troublesome to find particular information. However, in diligent community, you have a nice filtering system that can search the entire archive. Where we're searching, agendas, minutes, documentation, policy, what keyword are we searching for? And then you can also specify what month or what date or what date range we're looking for particular information. So makes it very, very easy for our public to find content. Same goes for the board. If we're at a meeting and someone brings up a particular item that was discussed at a previous meeting, whether that be, for example, an approval or a new hire or anything like that. Instead of tabling items, we have our full archive at our fingertips. We can keyword search, pull it up, continue our discussion. Everything's right here at our fingertips for review. So that is the public-facing side of diligent community. So that is the public facing side of diligent community. Um, and then I will now log in to the user facing side of diligent community. So keep in mind, there is no limit on the amount of username and passwords we have within the organization. Um, typically, we'll find it as our publishing team, our board members, and anyone on the department level that contributes to the agenda is most common as far as a user within the product. Now, it's very easy for a board member. It's where do we find diligent community? Again, we'll go from the hyperlink off the district website, or you can favorite this on any type of web browser. Once we get into community, we will log in, and the organization has the option to have single sign-on or multi-factor authentication, making it easier for you all for password and username management. And then, once we log in, we won't navigate very far from this current tab I'm on. This is the current meetings tab where all of your members will see your most recent or any of your most relevant content for review. Now, let's go ahead and take a look at our upcoming February meeting. And notice very clearly that I have shared the agenda with my members, but I have not yet published to our public. Um, I think in New York, open meeting is twenty-four hours in advance, so we'll be sure to come in here and publish this the day before this February eleventh meeting. However, for now, this is going to remain private for just our users. Keep in mind as well that the public agenda is going to be different than our member agenda. The member agenda might have some private content within that that the public is unable to view. So very clear separation of who can see what. I also want to mention for efficiencies for your publishing team, they don't have to manage two separate agendas. They're creating one agenda within the solution, yet they're separating who can see what. What can public see? What can board see? Well, let's take a look. Very similar to the public facing side, it's pulling up our packet version of the agenda. And right off the bat, you can see that I do have some private items. I'll give a better example here in a second, but I did want to mention that you do have the option in my individual login to take private notes. So maybe I needed to ask Drew Wareham a question here on this new district website, and I can say, ask Drew question here. This is totally private to my individual login. No one else can see this information. It would be like I've printed out an agenda and I've taken handwritten notes. So this, these notes here are completely private to Drew Wareham, and we've gotten a lot of great feedback on the ability to search your notes. So if we have a lengthy packet, we've taken a lot of notes, your members have the option to search their personalized notes. As we scroll throughout the agenda, I'll give a better example of what's public versus what's private. I just noticed that I didn't make some items private, so let's go back and reference our January meeting. Member version, so this is our private version. I'm going to scroll down to item five point two. This is approval of resignations. Notice publicly, I've shared name, department, and effective date. However, privately, I've shared resignation letters, knowing that only members listed as private users in our Board of Education can see this material here. It is locked and not available to any of other other users or to the public. But it's really as simple as that. We're logging in, we're landing on this current meetings tab, this is where we're finding our most recent and most of the up to date versions of all of our agendas and minutes. Simple as that for a board user. And then I wanted to point out the policy tab as well. Really neat feature on the backend, we have direct communication with the agenda and our policy book. As we're making revisions to our policies or reviewing our policies, everything's collaborating with the agenda. We're, we're quickly posting this on the agenda. So if I were to go into policy GS one, board member roles and responsibilities here, this is going to pull up my most current and most up to date adopted version. You can see that I've last modified this on July of twenty twenty-four, and I can also come to my right hand side to see the policy timeline. This is very beneficial. If I want to reference what the policy is now compared to when we adopted it, I'll come back to September of twenty twenty-three when it was adopted, I can compare it with the active version. So a nice way for us to see the timeline of our policies throughout the years. And this is also very beneficial if a public member calls in for a request of, there was a breach in policy, I noticed that it was updated, what was the policy six months ago compared to what it is now? We have that archive at our fingertips. Now, what I'm not going to cover tonight is a lot of the efficiencies that we'll see for your publishing team. Um, there's going to be a lot of beneficial features in here that's going to make their life easier as far as creation of your material, less management in Word and documentation management. It's going to eliminate email distribution of content, especially sensitive material. And it's also going to be very helpful as far as formatting or creating the agenda. That's where we see a lot of our time saved. That's we, where we see our efficiency enhanced, and then, of course, our security of our data. Um, now, for now, that was the board view, if you will, or or your day to day as a board member. Um, so that's just about all I have for you all. I know, um, I was talking a lot there, so I do apologize if that was quick, but I am more than happy to answer any questions as we uh just saw the product. If anyone has any questions or wants to relay through Ashley, I'm more than happy to answer.
All right, uh, I have a few questions.
Okay.
Um, the fee for this, is it a one-time fee or a yearly subscription?
It's going to be an annual subscription.
Okay, an annual subscription.
Mm-hmm.
If we were to go with this, and at some point in the future, we discontinue the service, what happens to all of our data?
Yep. So if we were to cancel the subscription, um, you will receive everything in a detailed format, meaning any type of agendas, minutes, documentation, everything will be sent to you on a drive in PDF format.
Okay, okay. And this is completely web-based, there's no app, version?
That is correct. It is mobile friendly, however, there is no app. It's all uh cloud and web-based.
Okay, okay. Um, how are board members notified if something's added to the calendar? Or documents are uploaded? Does it push out an email? Or is it reliant on us logging in and searching and looking for updates?
No, absolutely not. So your publishing team, when they go to release content, it's always going to ask them if they'd like to notify their members. Um, so it'll send you an email notification at any new material that's released, um, and you also have the option to turn on text notifications as well. So anything that's new that's released to your members, you'll be notified.
Okay, so email and text notifications, great.
Yes.
And, and. I'm just wondering about how much, you said there's a publishing team? So they're responsible for loading documents, updating the calendar?
It would be similar to your team that's currently creating the agendas and releasing the material. The only difference would be is they're creating and releasing through our system now.
Yeah, publishing team would basically be.
Okay, so people here would be uploading to this platform.
Yeah, so you'll have specific publishers, which are the individuals responsible for creating and releasing the content. Now, with that said, we have a really beneficial tool called the workflow, which will allow people that aren't publishers to submit items for approval. For example, uh, principals reports, uh, department reporting, bills list, finance reports. They can send those directly through the system in the community format, which is efficient because your publishing team won't have to reformat or balance emails, or did we put that on? It's a very smooth transition, everything's in the same format and securely shared through our system.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Great questions.
I would like to know what Ashley thinks about it. I'd like to know what Mike thinks about it. Did Mike was exposed to this? Does he know? Yeah, Mike Allen, does he? Like, is it, does it, is it easy to simulate with our system? Does it take, does it complicate it to integrate?
It, because it's web-based, it's very easy. Just, it would just be a link onto our website.
So you, Paul, played with it a bit?
Uh, I have not, no.
Let's listen to the.
Yes, this is, this is my, essentially my third time going through a presentation. Two of them were with Ashley, one was with um Ron, and Zach was there, and Mallory was there. Um, and we um went through a uh a more detailed, longer demonstration of the product.
Are you excited about it? Do you think it brings a lot?
It seems to me that there are some efficiencies that we could gain. I, I, I do, I do, I do see the uh um sort of transparency aspect that uh the product would bring to the district. Um, the, the thing that sticks with me the most is Drew mentioned at the top of his um presentation that four hundred and eighty-some districts in New York use board docs, which doesn't necessarily mean it's the same product that we're looking at today. It might be the old version, um, but uh that is, what, two-thirds of districts in New York have a, a working relationship with diligent. Um, that seems to me uh an indication that it's a good product and that it is.
Dan, just seeing your question here, so we don't necessarily provide like a, a trial through the system. However, you do, I can add you as a user to my demo account. Um, if you'd like to explore, I can also send you a current customer if you'd like to reference their site as well.
Yeah, that was my question. Do you offer demo or such?
Yeah, I apologize. I, I was, I, I typed the question uh into the chat, asking if there was a demo account that we could log into in order to spend some time navigating the platform.
Do we, has Bosie's using it or another school in St. Lawrence County?
There are a couple of schools that use board docs. Is that correct, Ashley? Uh, two or three that you found? So Drew, if, if you could um set us up with an account, a demo account that we could, you know, manipulate, I think that would be um a step in the right direction for us.
Uh, great. So what I'll do after the call is I'll provide a single login um with password and username, um, and I'll prompt you as a member in my system, which means that you can reference any private data, but will not have publishing rights. Um, so that will allow your members to log in to explore our archive of my demo account, if you will.
All right, that's excellent.
Any other questions for me?
Yes. Are there other questions? I think that's what he asked, if there were other questions. I think we're good, Drew. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, well, I appreciate your time tonight, this evening. Um, I hope you all have a great rest of your night, and thanks again for allowing me to present.
Thanks again. So um, yeah, I think everybody understood that Drew is going to be sending us um a way to um, you know, sort of manipulate, play around with um the various tools within the platform, and that could be helpful for helping us determine whether we want to go in that direction or not. Um, any other questions concerning, I don't know if I can answer them, or if anyone at the, anyone else at the table can answer them, but any other questions concerning diligent community?
What was the approximate annual cost?
Um, we, we do have a quote that's linked to our agenda. It's only, it's a prorated quote. Um, the, um, I believe, Mallard, correct me if I'm wrong, the uh full year subscription is in the, on the order of nine thousand dollars, between nine and ten. Is that correct? And um, we, that would be addable. Uh, our Bosie's aid rate is about eighty-five percent. So we're talking, you know, less than fifteen hundred dollars a year, uh, final cost to move in this direction.
One of the things I'm kind of in thinking about with this, it's an interesting platform. I can see a lot of benefits to it for many reasons. Um, it, it almost seems like if it's all of, it would take a role away from the school's website, or would it be too much of a duplication of a lot of the same things if our minutes and policies and all the things that are posted there? I mean, it's, because it seems like.
Not the school website so much, but the, the Board of Education page would essentially become the diligent.
This would link to our school website and then, okay. Because I didn't want us to have to post everything to the website that we're doing now and then have this as well.
This would be a complete replacement.
Okay.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to add to, because I got a chance to do the deep dive. You know, when you look at the cost benefit analysis, especially on the policy side of things, the public engagement tool with the widgets on the homepage, I think it's great if we can increase our public engagement, but also um the ability to do the keyword searches to find policies. Um, if you don't know where to look in the many, many policies we have, being able to type in a few words to find something very quickly, I think is something that people uh would find beneficial. Um, when we did the deeper dive too, I thought it was pretty easy to navigate. One thing that wasn't brought up too is that uh for Ashley, she can actually do her meeting minutes as we're doing them and then post them in real time after the meeting is done. So she can take votes, and she can do all the notes and do everything that needs to be done, and then post it almost the same evening. So I see it as efficient, like Paul, like Paul had mentioned that, um, you know, if we're trying to be a little more efficient, it's, it's nice on that level, but also for ease of access for, for everyone else or admin that, that are going to be in it. And then I think one of the questions we had too was, does anybody have any issues with the current system that we use? Is there any problems in the Google system?
That, that's a, that's a good question, and, and that this was um, my idea for investigating this was not born out of any um personal uh qualms that I have with the Google platform, nor anything that I've heard from any of you folks about, you know, negatives on the Google platform. So that is a good question. Are there any? Does anyone, you know, have any particular problem with um the Google platform that we're currently using to, to basically run our show?
Because Google keeps everything and doesn't keep it in a chronological order, you have to put it into folders. My particular Google Drive is just, it's a nightmare, because all of my stuff from teaching for however many years, you know, I think we started to use it probably in the last fifteen. It's just a nightmare to try to find anything. And if I don't know who sent it to me, like, sometimes things come to me from Ashley and sometimes they come to me from Ron. So if I'm not quite sure who sent it to me and shared it with me, it does make it harder to find. This seems like it's set up so that it does interface with different aspects so that you can find what you're looking for more, more quickly. So that's just me personally, though.
Well, there's nothing on fire. We don't have to make a decision now. Um, our, uh, the, the, the goal to. Our, the goal to have a look at this was simply a school year goal. And I think we ought to take another month to play around with the, with the platform through the link that Drew sends us and kind of take it from there. But thanks, thanks for your input on this, everybody. I, I do think it's important. And I just, I personally think that if we can make Ashley's life 5% easier by spending, you know, $1,300 a year final cost, I think it's, it's worth doing. And hopefully we make our work more transparent and more efficient at the same time. Anything else on Diligent? Okay, let's move on then to reports from administration and Mr. Burke.
So at this time I'd ask Mr. Oliver to come forward and introduce his folks that are going to discuss partnerships and collaboration with SUNY Canton.
Hi guys. Oh, sorry. Just trying to make sure you're awake. I hope we can follow the Diligent Community presentation and be half that engaging, but I think we can pull it off up here. So I want to say thank you for giving us an opportunity to come in. We know it's been a long meeting. I told the guys we have 10 minutes. But I'm going to tell you upfront, everybody up here is pretty proud about what we're about to present to you. So I wouldn't be surprised if it didn't go a little longer than 10 minutes, but we'll get through this as quick as we can. Okay, I'll introduce everybody that's here. This is Mike Newtown. He works over at SUNY Canton. He's the Dean of the Canino School of Engineering. Did I get all that right? Damn, I missed technology, sorry. We have Bill Jaggers, one of our teachers in our technology department. We have Noah Thomas, who's a teacher assistant in our technology department. And I don't know why John Root's sitting back there in a chair. He's the department chair for our technology department. All these guys are going to speak at some point tonight. Chris, do you have my presentation up? I can't see it. Yeah. So we're, we're really glad to be here to talk about this program that you've been hearing on and off out of the high school for at least a couple of years now. So we want to give you an update on where we're at. And I'll bring you back to the start as soon as I can see, there we go. Come on. All right. So the underlying philosophy of this program really goes back to our district goals. We're aspiring to be the leading educational institution in our community. And this is all aimed at a portion, a portion of our student population that we know is underserved. We send a large number of students to St. Lawrence Lewis Bosie Seaway Tech when they're juniors and seniors, and we have a really hard time engaging those kids in their freshman and sophomore years. They're vocationally bound students. They like to work with their hands. They really succeed, succeed and thrive once they get to Seaway Tech. But the first two years of high school can be a little disengaging for them. So the idea of this program was really to, to target those students at grades nine and 10. It's absolutely an attendance initiative to increase attendance. It's an initiative to increase graduation rate and it's an initiative to decrease dropout rate. All aimed at a group of students that we know struggles. And the underpinning of the program is to expose these students to various trades that they may be able to partake in once they go to Seaway Tech or maybe even some trades that aren't represented at Seaway Tech. It's intentionally giving them an experience on a college campus to get them thinking about post-high school plans. Very much, we're interested in raising the profile of vocational education at Messina High School. Our pre-vocational academy, which is really what we call it, and we really hope to brand it and put it really up on the same level with the music department and the IB program and the pre-vocational academy. These kids will be earning college credits as early as grade nine and 10 is part of this program. And in the long run, with our partnership with SUNY Canton, it's a, we're looking to build a robust P-16 vocational program. And we're well on our way to doing it. And we have a really cool logo. So, wait, I was going to tell Chris to change it, but apparently it's me. And it went the wrong way. So the timeline of this thing, it's about, we're on year four in the making at this point. And Mike, you can jump in at any point in time because you've been involved since the start on this as well. It started really when I came back to the high school. There was an immediate need you could see in those students. We started some initial conversations with Mike and I and the other folks that aren't here that are on, on part of the team. Most of us are here tonight. Chris Mayville, Mike doesn't like me to mention him because we stole him from SUNY Canton and he now works for us over at the junior high school. Jay Simmons works there now and Murphy Liggio, who's out on leave and couldn't be here tonight, and Robert Jordan. We all got together and we started talking out at Canino about how to change the world and change vocational programming. Those meetings went through the spring of 2003. That year's budget cycle, I asked to add an additional staff member, which thank you, the Board of Education supported. And last year we started running this program for the first time. We ran our survey of the trades class. We did our first visits with SUNY Canton where our students traveled out there to participate. And this year we've grown the program more. We've added a switch vehicle class. We still are running a survey of the trades. Actually, it's probably better to show you the next slide. This is really everything that's running in the pre-vocational program now. And you're going to hear a little bit about all of these, but it's our survey of trades class, our welding classes, our adaptive technology classes, our switch vehicle class, a shift from STEM science to STEAM science, some collaborations we have going on in the, in the school and then some things we want to do down the road. All of that being done with Bill and Noah, with the two guys behind me. We were trying to manage all of that and I think really doing a good job of it. And I guess, Mike, anything to add?
So one of the things that we do for the college standpoint is we're actually trying to supplement some instruction.
Thank you. So we will send over an instructor for a day. And they'll help out these two gentlemen, do things that we have the tools and the technology to do. You guys don't. It's not discouraging. It's just that we're really focused on the trades. But we'll bring the faculty here because it's cheaper than sending the kids over to Canton on a bus. We still want to see them out the college campus just because there's some equipment we just can't haul over here. And when we have that opportunity, then we can show them further opportunities. So maybe by the time they're at their 10th grade and they're looking for a trade, they'll have a better focus on Bosie's. They'll have a better way to stay here at the, or the high school. And then down the road, we recruit from Bosie's, we recruit from the high schools. We're going to win one or two students and we'll be happy.
Thank you. By the way, Mike, thanks for making the trip out here tonight to be part of this. So really, I don't want to talk anymore as much as I like to talk to you guys. So I'm going to invite Noah up, who's the teacher assistant that instructs survey of the trades. He's really nervous, so be nice to him. So Noah, come on up.
Hi, nice to talk to you all tonight. So the good word I've been hearing a lot is opportunity. And that's all that we're up here trying to do, is provide opportunities for these students. I know for a fact, when I was in 10th grade, I had no idea what I wanted to do with my life. But my guidance announcer sent me to Seaway Tech and that's where I started my welding career. Since then, I've traveled, traveled for five years as a combo millwright. And with through that, I've learned a lot about these trades and understand that these trades aren't just selected to one thing. They all tie together. And with this opportunity and classes surveys of trades, you are taking HVAC, electricity and basic electricity of housing and, what's the word I'm looking for? Housing and industrial, welding and carpentry. This is a half-year class that focuses on the majority of how those all relate. Okay? With these classes, I'm taking a group of kids that, most of them have never even really met each other and turning it into a program that they are all thriving. I have certain kids even today that have announced that they love to come to school simply because of mine and Mr. Jaggers' classes. We have students coming in every day on their study halls and free times and even during their cafeteria time to mess around with the switch vehicle or to get their hands on a welder for longer. This opportunity and these classes are just the beginning. And that's what we want it to be, is a base, to build our base so we can improve this program into many trades, into many opportunities for these kids. If it's pushing towards Bosie's, towards SUNY Canton, or towards one of the local unions, that's it. That's our role. It's to push them opportunities that they might be aware of or might not be aware of. But I know for a fact, as a 10th grade student, I was not aware of the opportunities that this St. Lawrence County can actually offer. And I think it's our job as teachers to push that. Teaching is a pride thing and that's I've learned in the past two years. If you're not taking pride out of the job that you're doing, then why are you doing that job? And that's a big thing that some of these kids are learning, is pride in their work. It's what's bringing them back to the class and it's what's bringing them every day to class with an attitude of willing to figure out different opportunities and different options. Going from there, we have my adaptive technology class. My end of the day starts to survey, or my end of the day, ends with surveys and beginning of my day starts with adaptive. And that is a group of, full of kids of Ms. Snyder's class that come in every morning and we just start with basic hand tools and just different crafts. The pictures that were here are where their winter craft show of all the different projects and things that we've done. Our next project pushing forward is focusing on Staff Appreciation Day. That's in May, so it gave us a few months, but our goal is to create something to let aware of each staff member that they're appreciated here. And that's what the kids are mostly very excited about. So coming from there, I'm going to pass this on to Mr. Jaggers.
Good evening, everyone. So this year I started teaching, I was given the STEM class and Mr. Oliver and I talked and we decided that we wanted to turn it more into a STEAM class. And we've had a lot of opportunity to do some really great things with the students. You can see from the slides up there, I really had to pick and choose which slides that went up there because we've just really done so much. But in there, we have an opportunity to build video games and kids love video games, so they get to build it from scratch. And we do 3D printing. And we do laser cutting and engraving and we build rockets. We build a lot of practical things. Right now, we have been going down to the special ed classroom and meeting with the kids down in the 1511 program, or the 811 program, I'm sorry. And the Please program. And my students were able to go down there and, and ask questions. And currently, right now, they're researching adaptive devices to, to a 3D print for disabled students. So even that, the idea of having empathy for others and spending time down there is really eye-opening for the students. It gives them an opportunity to design and to engineer and do some math and to, and to iterate and reiterate. And it's been a lot of fun. So you can see the pictures up there. We've done a lot of things. They also make a lot of practical things that they can bring home, like, like tree ornaments and clocks. And we play with some things like ten segreti structures. So a lot of really good opportunities. And I'm trying to give the students as much opportunity to put their hands in different things and try different things out and see what sticks. And then also a new class this year is our switch vehicle class, and that's been fantastic. So basically, we are building a three-wheeled, open-frame car from scratch. And it's been a lot of fun. It's, it's a program that is geared for teachers. And so we've been methodically for the past 17 weeks, 18 weeks, going through and putting the wheels on, putting a steering wheel on, putting the seats on, wiring up the lights and the batteries and the control box. And it's been a lot of fun. One thing that I've noticed was that my attendance in that class is almost always 95, 100%. In fact, I had one student who I had in class last year, and if he made it to school 20 days all year, I'd be surprised. And he's been coming, he's probably there 90% of the time. And it's a really good outlet. It's been a lot of fun. It's a really different way in order to engage with the students. We just kind of all go into the shop and we sit around the car and we, we read through plans and we read through instructions and we troubleshoot and we double check. And I've even got some student leaders that have come out of it who are going to come back next semester and get some community service credits to be an extra set of eyes around the car, which is really what we need because we're dealing with high voltage and just a lot of other sort of things that we need to take care of. An extra set of eyes is a lot of fun and very helpful. So it's been fantastic that, having this experience to work with those students. Oh yeah. So the other thing that we've been talking about doing, we've had, had some fun, is making products down in the tech wing that can be used by the school. So as you see up there, we have a display in the cafe of keychains that the students have designed. And those are all keychains. A lot of them are just, keychains are basically for the school district. They're Raider keychains, but they're also ones for winter sports right now. So they're small. They're about 80 millimeters in size and the kids design them. It's, there's a rifle team and basketball and hockey and there's little icons on them. And so those are made by the students and they're on display in the cafe. And that's a little bit of an old picture. I think we have about four or five of those that have been bought up right now. But that's been a great connection. For the kids to make things that are, that they can see being, being bought in a cafe or being used by the school gives them a real sense of purpose that what they're making isn't just making it for a grade, but they're making it for something that can be long-lasting and be used by the school. So they have a lot of pride in the work that they've done.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah, and if you, you see my little graph down there at the bottom, one of the really neat things we're trying to do there is really blend together three programs. I don't even know if all the board members are aware, at the high school, my business department runs a full-fledged cafe, right, that serves coffee and drinks and serves light breakfast items. And it's very busy. It's very popular. They also run what is, I don't want to call it a consignment store, but we basically run a clothing store in the, in the school, which is free for students who they need anything. The idea is to take those programs that already exist, blend it with Bill's program and the vocational program where they're actually creating product to be sold there. And then including our special education students who could get workplace hours and CEDOS hours working in those spaces, selling items that their classmates have had. And we're well on our way to that. I really, you know, when we see that kind of synergy between programs, it makes me really happy as a principal. So where we're at, oh, and unintended, we never got into this partnership with SUNY Canton expecting anything more than to build this pre-vocational program. But somewhere along the way, they started offering college credit for a lot of stuff. Every course that you see listed on there at Messina High School right now is a college credit course at SUNY Canton. It's something they're getting college credit for. And they made it really, really easy to do. So it's a great benefit for our students. And to my, it's not just SUNY Canton credit. It's transportable credit. So it's a great opportunity for our students at our school. So, you know, where we are, if we're building this program, we're at step one right now, which is trying to build a strong foundation with a good partner, which we have. We're building the protocols. We're building the classes. We're putting things together. The next step of this, you know, we're approaching the point where we can't do a lot more until we add something more into the program. So there's a time coming when we'll be looking to add more staff into the program. And if you want to know, the, the big audacious goal is to turn this thing in the end into a P-16 transition to workforce. When we get our feet under our ground with the educational side of it, we have a severe goal to reach out to community employers and trade unions and other places and give our students vocational experiences and get them into those workplaces as juniors and seniors. And, you know, trying to create a program where a kid might come through Messina, come out with some credits at SUNY Canton and walk right into a. come out with some credits at SUNY Canton and walk right into a trade union coming out of high school, which I think would be a tremendous pathway to open for this group of students. So that is three years worth of work in, I don't know, 15 minutes. Uh, do you guys have any questions based on anything that we presented to you today?
Alan, I have a quick one. What's the process of a student enrolling in this? Being selected, being involved in the program?
Well, it's really part of the registration process. We sell the course. If kids are interested, they can come in. I'll be honest with you with Bill taking over the STEM. You may remember the the function of the high school, the old STEM science class was the non-regents, usually freshman science that they took. Now they're taking STEAM as freshmen. So Bill is seeing all of those kids. That's our clientele. So not only do they have interest, but Bill's got the ability to almost recruit and tap kids that he thinks would be successful into the program to the other courses. But it's open to everybody that has an interest.
It's all driven by the students.
Yes.
They just say, I want to be involved in the program.
And 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 we're getting to the point where we're also starting to go to kids and be like, hey, this would be really good for you. You should enroll in this class.
Sounds great.
Uh, Alan, what is your typical enrollment? Like, what was it? It's this is the fourth year, so what was it the previous three years and what was it this year?
Last year was a different, our our first iteration was uh Mr. Jaggers teaching video gaming. What were the other classes last year? So video game design, Makerspace. And Noah had survey of the trades and let's say an average enrollment in those classes of eight to 10, somewhere in that neck of the woods. And there was multiple sections of some of them. Some of them were smaller. Uh, but that was year one and if you in the high school to fill a class, it has to be part of the registration process. And in year one, we tried to build it after the schedule had been built and put it in later, uh, which is always a challenge to do. But so in year one, things worked. Uh, the survey of trades class worked very well in year one. The other classes, we never got on the right footing. So when we had the opportunity to change STEM to STEAM and really expand this year, how many sections of STEAM do you have this year, Bill? And how many kids total? So there's about 50 kids taking STEAM science. There's probably another 10 kids in survey of the trades. Uh, what do you got about 10, 12? About 10 in the switch vehicle class, which is really about all that class can hold. It probably should only have about eight kids in it in reality because of the kind of work they're doing. Uh, so we have a fairly good number of kids involved with this programming now.
And either you or Bill talk a little bit about Switch. I know I should probably know what this is, but the vehicle looks big. Are we riding in the vehicle? Is it remote controlled? What would it?
It's a street legal electric car. It doesn't work yet and it didn't fit through the door, so we had to build a garage door in the tech room to fit it in and out. And I don't think we're going to finish building it in the first 20 weeks of the school year, do you? And we're fingers crossed it's his first time through, so it might take us into the we have another section. The idea was to build it, take it down and have another section next semester. Uh, Bill's first time through the program, so I'm not sure we're actually going to get it all built, so we're going to have to you know, adapt and overcome into the second semester, but it's our first time through, so these things happen. But it's a it's it's not small. You know, it's a good looking vehicle. And by the way, it's a program that can grow because there's there's more advanced cars, you know, the Switch is a Switch one, a Switch two and a Switch three. We have the most basic vehicle. If we were to gain interest in this, this could expand down the road as well. And the kids are really into it and no offense, the teachers are really into it. Noah, who has a flow course load, spends a period at Switch because he likes to. Uh, and one of my science teachers, Mr. Kimball, is a total gearhead and he spends one of his planning times down there helping Bill with the Switch class as well. It's it's a really high interest area.
So is this like a kit that you buy or? Okay.
Yeah, it's a kit and Bill had to attend a fairly serious training. I think he went to California, was it? Where'd you go?
I was supposed to go to California, but they ended up uh having one in Vermont.
Oh, that's not as good. Um, he was supposed to go to California, ended up in Vermont, but it was a sizable training he had to do to even be able to get the car. So.
And and what are we talking about cost?
Was it grand? Yeah, I'll let you get back in here. Was it grand, wasn't it?
It was more like 65, I think. That included training.
So yeah, so if everybody didn't hear, it was about 60, 65,000 that included the training. But it's also reusable in an unlimited way, so it's not like you build it once and you got to go buy a new one. Build it, strip it down, build it again next semester. Yeah, about five, then we'll buy a better one.
Is there an increased demand for program capacity? So are we waitlisting or turning kids away from from enrollment opportunities?
We did not this year. I suspect strongly we will next year. And we've also hit the limit of what we're capable of doing. Uh, we're under utilizing this space in the school. Uh, Noah basically works out of the woodshop and Bill works out of the technical side of the tech lab. The woodshop remains open and really ground that we need to take uh advantage of. And uh, you know, being being truthful about it, th- this program won't get any bigger until we add more staff. We'd really like to bring in construction or automotive or HVAC. I don't think any of us involved with this care what it is. We just need to bring something else into it because we have more. We see the impacts that it has for the kids. It's it's exactly hitting the niche we wished it would when we planned it. That group of kids, you know, Messina Central High School does a great job and has historically, if you're a a high achieving college bound student, there's a great program for you. If you're a music kid, great program for you. If you're athlete, there's a great program for you. If you're BOSI's kid, by the time you get to your junior and senior year, there's a great program for you. Those BOSI's kids sometimes bounce around that freshman sophomore year because they want to get to something where they're working with their hands. Uh, and it's really hitting that nerve, so.
Alan, with with regard to the addition of these other sort of trades and whatnot, are you, is there any discussions with the curriculum people at BOSI's to see that this is a stepping stone? It progresses with what that what those programs are?
Yeah, it's all that's in our mind is to make sure we're that's why we're not looking to re- to recreate a BOSI's program.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
We're looking to feed, we're looking to give basic exposure. Like survey of the trades is called survey of the trades because what we're trying to do, show them a little construction, show them a little welding, show them a little HVAC, get their hands on to it a little bit so they know which program they want to do when they get to BOSI's. Yeah, go ahead.
So my first two years started teaching, I actually started teaching at Seaway Tech under Nancy Collins. I felt a great personal relationship between the teachers at Seaway Tech and am fully understanding what those teachers want these kids to understand walking into their classrooms. From basic maths, algebra, measurement to tool safety and kind of common sense of working in a shop and a hazardous area. So that is one thing I had been in communication with BOSI's. And we do have a line of where we want this to go and where we can kind of play teammates with helping these kids with that extra step, if it is BOSI's, if it's the trades, or if it's somewhere like SUNY Canton.
Oh, go ahead.
So one of the things that we have faculty members at SUNY Canton that are on the advisory boards for all the tech programs at BOSI's. And we're aware of what they're looking for because we're trying to recruit those students. So think of this more as as this program grows, we're going to build that initiative to get those students into BOSI's while at the same time providing an introduction in the ninth and 10th grade that they're not seeing right now. And if that works well, it works great for everybody. BOSI's wins, the high school wins, SUNY Canton wins. And the students will ultimately win. And as a mechanical engineer, people think that we don't play with things and if you're a good engineer, you'd know how to pick things apart. So that switch vehicle that Bill's putting together is a really great tool to teach these kids a variety of aspects of all the different trades. Even if they don't wind up in automotive, they're going to use that someplace. And that's all stuff that's going to lead them by the time they're in 11th grade to know which well, in 10th grade, when they're making a decision, which um program at BOSI's they want to take, so.
Thanks.
You know, the other thing, Kevin, is the one area that we are intimately running out of space in is in fact BOSI's and Seaway Tech. Uh, we have more students every year that want to go to BOSI's than we can send. Uh, because you know as best as anybody, the tech center is full. Those programs are pretty full. Uh, so we're also looking to do this to be able to fill a niche maybe for those students too. The kids that we can't get to BOSI's that still want vocational programming. So to be able to maybe hit some of those kids as well, so.
I'd like to hear that at a topic at another board meeting.
At the filling up of BOSI's?
Yes, and have some more discussion about those things.
Yep, more than willing. I mean, we send a lot of kids. We I I know we send more to that Seaway Tech Center than anybody else does, but.
Probably 150 plus.
Yeah, well, we s- we figure around 80 a year. It doesn't end up be 80 per grade a year. So the two years that we go. It's a very significant portion of our class, which is why we have the need for this program.
Yep.
Any other questions related to our program?
I'm I'm interested to know, Mike, if if there are any other districts that you're working with in a similar fashion to to Messina.
We do a lot of dual enrollment programs where we can. Uh, more of them have been happening in Jefferson County than they have here. This is the first one we've taken fully under our our view inside SUNY or in SUNY uh St. Lawrence County, so. Um, this works well here. Madrid is stepping up because they want to do something similar because they've been talking and hearing things, so. I'd rather get this one started first and get it organized before I go deal with Madrid.
Right.
Agreed.
Well, uh.
That would have nothing to do with the fact that Ron's brother is a superintendent and the high school principal is a good friend of mine in Madrid, so.
Well, I I just want to commend everyone involved. Uh, I think this is a tremendous start with great potential for growth. And uh Noah, I sure hope you're going to get yourself certified as a teacher. Because awesome. Um, we'd we'd love to keep you here, I think, based on what I've heard tonight.
Any other questions from anybody? We just really appreciate you giving us time to come in and brag about a program that we really love and we're really proud of. So thank you for giving us some time. I'd really like to thank these guys. They didn't need to be here tonight and Mike didn't definitely need to come in tonight, so thank these guys as well. So, thanks.
So everything else will be anticlimactic.
Well, that was time well spent.
That was. The next item is just to make the board aware that we have a bus utilization request from PAL for a trip to Titus on February 7th. We also have the senior class trip proposal request for Friday, May 30th through Sunday, June 1st to Ocean City, Maryland. Are any questions on either of those?
I I guess uh now's the time. Well, we're 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 going to have, we're going to have opportunity for discussion during uh other items for action, so I think I'll wait.
Alright, then that's everything that I have.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Burke. And again, thanks for uh for having those folks come in and and tell us about that fantastic program. Uh, alright, we'll move on now to recommended actions. Uh, first up is the consent agenda items. And uh are there any consent agenda items that any board members would like pulled from the consent agenda for further discussion? None? In that case, I will call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor? Any opposed? Consent agenda carries. Moving on to other items for action. We have an approval of a bus utilization request from uh the Police Activities League.
So move.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any approval or any uh anyone against? Any abstentions? One, okay. Uh, we have an approval for uh for the field trip request for the class of 2025 senior trip.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Uh, I have a question. Um, in looking through this request, under I understand it's a senior trip. And probably, you know, uh exposing seniors on a senior trip to cultural experiences and, you know, schooly type things uh is not the highest priority, but I found this um requisition lacking in detail on what's going to be happening. Can you uh address that at all, Ron, or? Oh, excuse, yes. Thank you, Mr. Oliver.
Um, yes, I do, just for lack of interest in the students.
Alright, uh, I'm hearing a recommendation. Do you concur, uh, Mr. Burke? I'm hearing a recommendation to table the uh class of 2025 uh class trip to Ocean City, Maryland. Could I get a a um a motion to that effect, please?
Motion to table.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we have um two resolutions for an unpaid, for a paid administrative leave. We'll take resolution number one first.
So move.
Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? And resolution number two for paid administrative leave.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Burke for personnel.
At this time, I recommend approval of the action items listed numbers one through 37 on the personnel list.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? That carries. Okay. We'll move on now to new business and uh are there any items that uh board members would like to see on a future agenda?
As I stated in the previous presentation, I'd like to hear some more about some of the uh opportunities for our students at BOSI's and where the limitations lie.
Anyone else have item?
I think we also need to uh get going on the ad hoc committee that's going to be looking at the seniors. This is a good time to do that and I think we have some timetables where we're going to offer those surveys and collect them and I think we need to go a little bit further. And it was interesting that um I can't remember who was talking about it tonight, but they were saying we want to get these kids linked in with community members so that we can get them into trades. And I think that would dovetail perfectly in that um senior reception near the end of the year to invite members of Rotary, people who are part of the community to um kind of network with our high school seniors. So I I think we need to like get together and start brainstorming about exactly how this is going to look before it gets too late in the year. So I, I think we need to like get together and start brainstorming about exactly how this is going to look before it gets too late in the year.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, uh, get a notice out, try to, try to find a, a time to get together and do some brainstorming. Uh, I have, uh, something that I'd like to, uh, have on a future agenda and I'm, I'm hoping it would be next month, um, Mr. Burke. And that would be a mid-year update on the district goals.
Yes, that's already in the works.
Okay. Uh, and fair warning, um, Trish actually brought up, uh, one of the district goals, um, the, um, uh, reception for students and, uh, getting surveys going. Uh, I'd like to, uh, give a mid-year update on our Board of Education goals as well. I'll, uh, put that together for next month. And try not to make it too boring. Anyone else have, uh, items for future agenda? Okay, nothing there. And, uh, communications, uh, last, last chance from the peanut gallery. All right, so, uh, we'll, uh, end this meeting by, um, uh, calling for a motion for adjournment.
So move.
All in favor? Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.